Start the meeting and start with the pledge.
In the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick call the roll?
Justice Soltzer.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Gifford.
Here. So, Mayor, oh yeah, Trusty Tiberio is excused. Trusty Gray will be a little late. Item number three, privilege of the floor. Is there anyone who would like to be heard at privilege of the floor? By once, twice, a close privilege of the floor. Item number four. So, this is a public hearing on local law number 2020B relating to no standing and one-way streets in that area just north of here. Is there anybody who would like to be heard in the public hearing for that law? So, you guys from the participation in government?
Yes.
When we change the law in the village, it's necessary to, we pass a resolution at one month and then it gets published in the newspaper, and then the next month we vote on it. So, the publication in the newspaper gives people a chance, if they want to, to come here and say, you know, I think this is a great idea, or more likely, we hate this, just don't do it. So, this law we're talking about right now is, if you notice, the Tenbrook Street here and Catherine Street and First and Second and Third Streets have signs that say one-way on Sunday for certain hours. We've talked to the churches who pushed us to do that law in the first place years ago, and they don't care so much about it anymore. So, we're changing that so that Tenbrook Street here will be one-way not quite as early in the morning because there are churches later right now. But the most of the rest of the streets, the one-way on Sunday will go away because the churches don't care. So...
Well, they've built parking lots and the...
That's true.
...participation's down so that the need for it's reduced.
Yes, and even the people at church get confused by it. So, we all think it'll be better the way we've got it now, the way we're changing it. So, anyway, anybody, I guess we have to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
I'd like to thank Chief Almy and the Traffic Safety Board, in which I participate in, for doing such a good job of researching it and including the people who are affected in coming to a decision by working with the residents and the people that, you know, are actually affected. So, thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, call the roll.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yes. Item number five is, this is the other end of it for government kits. This is the introduction of a local law, which is 2020C, authorizing a possible property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Municipal Law 3C. You've heard of the tax cap in New York. It's, if we go over the tax cap, there's a severe penalty from the state. If we pass a resolution with at least...
Sixty percent. Although tonight we're just introducing...
Okay. Okay. So, if there's any chance we'll go over it either on purpose or by mistake, it's, we're better off passing a resolution allowing us to do that if we need to. So, this doesn't say we're going to do it, it just says we can. So, anyway, would somebody like to introduce the local law 2020C?
I would like to introduce the local law 2020C, but I'd like to state a couple things about it.
First, let's second that discussion.
I'll second it.
So, after introducing that possibility, it's interesting to say that you're going to increase taxes, but still recognize where we live. We're a very unique village. We have a lot of services that other municipalities have, and we acknowledge that. I moved here for the school district. I moved here for the services that are provided by the village. I, there's a, there is a fair amount of people who've never had to, who've been very fortunate to not have to use the services we have, like our career firefighter course, who, you know, my child was turning blue in my street, in my home, and I called them and they were there in three minutes. They were on my porch with advanced life support in three minutes. And there is a contingent of people who have not had the misfortune of having to do that or, you know, realizing the need and the want and the desire to have the level of protection we have. We have our own police force. Our firefighters respond to 1,600 calls plus a year. All of our garbage is picked up without question. You can line it with garbage cans and they'll pick it up. Our yard waste is picked up all of the time. We have controlled spending for the things that we need controlled spending for, and we're always looking for new sources of revenue and ways to save money while still maintaining the same level of service that brought me to this village before. So, while I am not a fan of paying more taxes, I will every year pay more taxes to keep the things that I have and enjoy as a village resident. You know, if you start talking about a tax cap that's imposed by the state, that the state doesn't adhere to themselves, and then they play, pay, they play with the amount of funding that they give us as a municipality, it really just, it doesn't make any sense that if we want to live the way we live and we want to have the things we want to have, we should be able to do that and pay more for it. Last year, from 2018, I'm looking at my tax bills now, in 2018, we had the two percent, we had the two percent change. We had a 3.92 percent change last year, and I paid $75 more for my home. I'm very willing to do that, especially things get, things do not get cheaper. So, I acknowledge the fact of the realities of meaning existing, and I am controlling my future by paying more for the things I have. So, I, tax cap really doesn't mean anything when my child and my family can be supported in their time of need. So, thank you.
I agree with George on a lot he said. Unfortunately, our village is only a two-point, what, 2.5 mile village, and we have no more ways to build out on it, like the Tomahawk or Rotterdam or even the city of Connecticut. So, we are looking for a lot of ways to hold expenditures down without cutting services because once you cut services, if you cut a police officer or a fireman off or a DPD worker off, you'll never get it back. So, we're working very hard to try to keep the services up that the village people like without doing that, and we have other means we're working on as we speak to control certain things in the budget so we don't have to get into predicament like we are. So, it's just, it's very difficult to work with, but we'll do it, and we've got some good people on board, and we'll do the best we can.
Thank you, Joe. So, now, welcome Trusty Heather Gray. Heather, we just introduced the local law for the possibility of going over the tax cap if we need to. Quick call the roll?
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to go, change the order of the agenda. We will jump to item 12?
Well, we have to do 11 first.
Jump to item 11?
Yes.
Okay. So, we are, for you guys, we're talking about having a public hearing and the possibility of building a new fire station and renovating this building. It's a very difficult, long process that we've been working on for quite a while. We have not spent significant money on this building since it was built in 1928. So, to do that, we need to, we need to have a public vote. Before we can do that, we have to get in place the possibility of a bond issue to pay for it. So, tonight we have several resolutions for creating that bond issue, and if we don't pass the referendum, these will just go away or anything. We don't have to get the money. So, the first item is number 11, which is the, the SEQR for the project, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, as, as part of the process, we have to do what's called SEQR, which is S-E-Q-R, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And the village board says, is the, proclaims itself to lead agency, right?
Correct.
And we've prepared a SEQR resolution that says what we think is going to happen with that project. Go ahead.
So, would you like me to just go?
Okay. Good enough.
Okay. So, I'll just, just review that the board has received the full environmental assessment form. It's the long form, though actually it wasn't required, only the short form was required. I think everyone has received that and had a chance to review it. It's had a very thorough review. As we've discussed the project, there's, while some things, there may be a small impact, they're all very minimal, anything, you know, we'll try to address the best we can. There's also been a proposed resolution and negative declaration sent to the board for review. If there's anything, anyone has any questions now, we can discuss it. Otherwise, we can go forward and adopt the resolution, finding that there's no significant
影響? Environmentally?
Yeah. Someone?
Okay. Should I read this, or is it, are we okay about it?
You don't have to read the whole thing.
Okay.
I mean, it's here. I'll just go with the board trustees, and I'll say this too, for the renovation of this building, because it's a renovation, staying within the bounds of the current property, there's really no SEQR requirement. It's really for the proposed new fire station down the street. So, whereas the village is proposing a new fire station, and whereas the village board trustees is the lead agency, and whereas it's been determined that this, and it's not just for the construction, but also for the bond resolution, that it's an unlisted action. And whereas, after due diligence, it's found that the board trustees is the only agency with discretionary approval for the project, whereas the board has considered the action and a full environmental assessment form has been prepared, and the draft negative declaration has also been prepared. And whereas the board has identified relevant areas of environmental concern and has taken a hard look at these areas and has made a reasoned elaboration of the basis for its determination, now therefore be resolved by the board trustees of the Village of Scotia, based upon thorough review and examination of the facts relating to the action and careful review of all the potentially adverse environmental impacts and the entire record and proceedings relating to the action, the board finds that the action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and then a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. The attached negative declaration incorporated herein by reference is issued and adopted for the reasons stated in the attached negative declaration. The mayor and/or Village Scotia personnel and council are hereby authorized and directed to distribute copies of the resolution as necessary. This resolution will be effective immediately. So, someone should make a motion.
Somebody make a motion?
So, that's saying that we don't need one?
No, that's saying, it's saying that we, that we're determined there's a negative declaration, so we don't have to do a full environmental impact statement. So, if there, if we find that there is going to be adverse impact, then there's many more steps that we have to go through, but here there is not.
So, when does that, the determination happen, I guess?
Right now.
That's what we set out. That's the work that the...
Those are all the documents you received?
Right.
Okay.
So, in this, in the process, this vote has to be taken before the bond resolution is adopted.
Okay.
So... Joe?
I'll move the...
I have the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Blue gear.
No.
Either. All right, I guess I'll move it.
I'll second. Quick call the roll?
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yeah. Item number 12 is a bond resolution for Village Scotia Municipal Building Firehouse Project?
And it's actually two, it was two bond resolutions, one because they're different projects, even though we're doing it, effectively it'll be one. One is for this building, one is for the fire hall reconstruction purpose, excuse me. Village Hall, we need to do two resolutions. Yeah.
So, I'll make the motion to move forward the bond resolution for the Village Scotia Fire Department to be built on the property as intended.
I'll second.
Quick call the roll?
Justice Gray?
Yes.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yes.
I'll also make the motion for the Village of Scotia Police Department and Village Hall to be renovated and refit, to be brought up to current day condition here on the existing property as described in the design.
Gray, do you second?
I'll second.
That's a good one. Quick call the roll?
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yeah. Item number 13, so what's the...
So, as part of that bond resolution, as the board had previously discussed, the board has taken action to put the bond resolution to referendum. If they had not done that, it would have been subject to permissive referendum, meaning citizens would have had to file a petition saying they wanted it to go to referendum, but the board has done that on its own within the resolution that was just adopted. So, the next step is to adopt language for the proposition that the citizens will vote on. So, that's a new resolution packet, which basically just is a brief summary of the project.
Okay. And do we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Resolution to adopt the bond proposition language. I am seconding the resolution to adopt the bond proposition language.
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yes. Item number 14 is a resolution to schedule the bond referendum and declare one election district. So, for you guys, this is, the election district is the Village of Scotia, and so we're, we have a, we're talking about having the election on the 7th of April, right? Or somewhere is that?
Yes.
Okay. So, can we...
I'll make the motion for the resolution to schedule the bond referendum and declare one election district for the vote and referendum.
I'll second.
Quick call the roll?
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Item number 15, a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with fiscal advisors and marketing for the services related to the bond referendum. So, as part of getting a bond, you have to hire a specialist to do it, right? That's where I talk to them.
I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with fiscal advisors and marketing incorporated for services related to bond referendum.
Do you second?
I'll second.
Quick call the roll?
Trusty Gray?
Yes.
Justice Soltzer?
Yes.
Justice Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Includes the stuff we need you for, Heather. If you want to stay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Need to go, see you later.
Thank you.
Okay, so, back up to number six. The fire department has, with relation to its paramedic program, has a, must have a medical director, a doctor, someplace to be their director. We're asking for a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Mary Ann Mochi and Bassett Hospital.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. George, do you second?
I'll, which line was it again?
Six.
Six.
I'll second authorize the mayor to sign a medical director agreement with Mary Ann Mochi and Bassett Hospital.
Okay. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number seven, authorize the mayor to sign the 2020 stop DWI agreement with St. Anthony County.
I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, a resolution to authorize amendment to the agreement with Prime AE regarding the Belgioso sanitary sewer connection.
I'll make the motion for the resolution to authorize the amendment to the agreement with Prime AE regarding Belgioso sanitary sewer connection.
So, this is, guys, for you in the audience, this is, they're building a cheese plant out in Corporations Park. The village is providing sewer services to them. They have a slight change in the plans, which, for which the, our engineer needed to redesign something, and so they charged us money, and Belgioso has agreed to pay us back for that, so we just have to agree to pay Prime. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number nine, a resolution to authorize the Quick Treasurer to publish a request for qualifications for landscape architectural project design services for the common park upgrades and Hudson Mohawk Chanaui Trail development.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Just, that's another great project that our, our department heads have worked for to get monies to improve our village, creating walkways and improving public spaces, so it's a, it's another great example of our team working together. So, I second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number 10, resolution, can we have a resolution to authorize Prime AE Group of New York to call for bids for the Village of Scotia wastewater system improvement project contracts, number one wastewater removal and disposal, number two WWTP demolition, number three general construction, and number four electrical construction?
I move the motion.
I'll second.
So, this is our project to clean up the, the old wastewater treatment plant, which is at the corner of Chanaui and Washington. What's, Andy, what's WWTP?
Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Okay.
It's, it's split up into the four bids because, so that we can, we just have to see how the bids come in, but we have a priority of what has to get done, and so we'll get as much done as we can with those funds.
Do we have a resolution?
No.
Somebody offer that resolution?
I'll make the motion for the WWTP.
I'll second.
Okay. Should we go on, or say? No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? All right. Number 16 is mayor's comments of the board. I thank everybody for all the help, and I hope we, so the public hearing, the next public hearing for the municipal project is on the 17th of March at the Reform Church. Class people are welcome to be there. It should be a more exciting show than this one. So, that's important for village people. We have a centennial of our police department coming up in a week. Dan's been working very hard on that, but I noticed last fall that the police cars had serving probably since 1920, and I said, oh, when was that? And then in 1920, on the 22nd of March, the village board hired 20 policemen. I said, wow, that's, you know, we have 12 now, so, wow, that's a lot. Well, I find out that all but about one of them were trace people in town, had other jobs, and they were also policemen on the side, but, so anyway, we're having a celebration and congratulated Dan for his efforts. We're, we're working on the flood house. So, the, the flood house has been under the control of the historian, who is doing a great job, but she's only one person. And we used to have something called the Scotia Historical Association, which went dormant in sometime in the 90s, and we had the Friends of the Flood House, which was very active and productive, and they no longer exist. So, the Scotia Historical Association has never been dissolved by the State Education Department. So, we're working on the process of resurrecting that, and it's, you know, it's already got a charter and people and as officers and... a charter and, and people and, and as officers, and should be a much easier process than starting a new one. So, if you, students see, you know, something with the Scotia Historic Association, join up, when, when we get a chance. Uh, but we're happy about that. Um, I think that's all I've got. Um, correspondence liaison and special committee reports, George.
Um, I, uh, take this time to look back at the notes I take, I try to use as little paper and pencil as possible, um, and I look back at the notes I've taken and the number of things that I've gone to, and it's just, it, it's, uh, great to be, um, involved with, uh, the things that are going on here in the village. Um, it starts with, uh, you know, towards the end of the last month, uh, or the beginning of last month, it, uh, we were working with the town for, on Safe Routes to School, and working on, uh, meeting with our fire chief and our Department of Public Works head and the mayor, and, uh, uh, one of our county representatives, Michelle Osterlich, was there as well. Um, it's great to be part of these things and see good things going on from all the efforts we do. You know, we have, we're having meetings about the budget and the importance of the financing and the, the numbers of how we continue to do what we do, and the public impact on that, and the reasons why we do the things we do. Um, I said some of those earlier. Um, to, uh, you know, more work sessions and discussions about the current facilities project, which is going to be great for the village, um, meeting with the, with the mayor too, um, today, speaking about what he just spoke about with the historian is great, because there's a lot of history and a lot of good things here, and, um, you know, listening to our, uh, department heads over the past couple days to detail the, um, the budgets that all work into our full village budget, and the, the strides and the efforts that they're making to keep costs down and make those raises minimal, because we all acknowledge the fact that things cost more, and we have a, a duty to provide the services we do to the village, so it's, uh, it's really good to make sure that we're all working towards reduction in those, reduction in those raises while increasing revenues and continuing to offer the services we have, so, um, it's, uh, so people may look at me, and I said it before too, that I'm not paying attention, because I'm sitting here typing all the time, but I, uh, there's a reason behind it.
You can get it back, it's better than the rest of it.
There's a reason behind it, so it's, uh, it's good to, uh, to look at these things and realize what we're doing and the reasons why we're doing it, so, um, yeah. Uh, and, uh, that big willow tree that, uh, was damaged by wind and taken down, and people see that coming down and seeing that as a bad thing, that tree was Maria's grandparent, it was a memorial tree for your grandparents, and, um, the storms have damaged it beyond repair, and then when they started taking it down, it was, had a lot of insect infestation in it, um, and it was, uh, it's, it's just those little things that bring back memories and make it nice to live here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
Okay, we have a first, uh, car show meeting, which is tonight, and they will change the date so I can attend it, and, uh, we do have, uh, we're putting, we're starting to put that together. Uh, we also have, uh, a second meeting of the Memorial Day Parade. Uh, we're trying to get the, the businesses like Cumberland Farms and Stewart's to participate in, uh, all the, all the things that the village puts on, uh, during the summer months, the car show, the holiday, and they have in, in the Memorial Day Parade. Uh, we're working on that. Uh, and what else we got? We are working with the county, uh, to try to get some cameras in the village, and we've been in contact with the county manager, and I wait for a call back on that, because they said there is money that they have, that they are willing to put the cameras in for us, so, uh, Dan and I have been talking about that, and, uh, we're trying to get the, uh, hooked up with the county, it's just like, uh, paying phone tag, but we will get the whole, and we'll try to get that out of the way. And basically, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, department, number eighteen, departmental reports.
I'll make the motion, your approval.
Item number, thanks. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item nineteen, approval of the budget adjustments for the month of, month of January and February twenty twenty.
I approve the budget adjustments for the month of January and February.
Okay. George?
Second.
Call in, or call the roll, I think.
Trustee Solichak?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yes. Item number twenty, uh, resolution to pay our bills.
I will make the motion to pay the bills.
I'm second.
Do you want to appoint yourself?
Oh, I, okay, I guess. I need to appoint myself a member of the audit committee. Can I give that to Heather once again?
I approve.
I will second. Uh, call the roll?
Trustee Solichak?
Yes.
Trustee Rizzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gifford?
Yes. Item twenty-one, motion to approve the minutes for February twelfth, regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty-two, motion to approve the minutes for the February twenty-fourth, special meeting?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item twenty-three, a motion to approve the minutes for the March third, special meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number twenty-four, does anybody have any new business?
I've got one sting of new business, I just want to give this to you, Tom, and I give one to George, why don't you take a look at it? It's something to do with, uh, maintenance of, uh, properties in the village. Uh, this is mirrored, uh, with another municipality, and, uh, I think it's something we ought to look into to see if we could possibly, uh, either put it as code or as a village's law, uh, to, to clean and maintain the village. Uh, I know there's a number of complaints, uh, that have been, uh, going around, uh, properties, and it also includes rental properties and homeowners' properties, so, uh, if everybody would take a look at that to see if it's something that we could possibly, uh, adopt for the village, uh, for the good welfare of the village, uh, and you can bring it back for a vote.
Thank you.
I would appreciate it, so...
You, you got a copy, George?
I gave my copy to Heather, do you have the electronic one?
I have another one for you.
All right.
I, I'm all set for you. It's, it's, it basically mirrors one of the municipalities in the area, but I think it's a, it's a, it's something we should look at, uh, for the good welfare of the village, so, uh, if everybody looks at that, maybe you can bring it up at the next meeting, uh, see if you can make it work for the village, I think, uh, it'd be worthwhile.
Great. Any other new business? Anyone have a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Thank you.
Thank you.